Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mary Beth?
Nelson?
Here.
Orison?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Wunschel?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Bulk?
Here.
Item three, consent agenda. Item A is a motion to approve city council minutes of July eighteen, twenty twenty-two. B, there are no licenses. C is a motion to approve residential tax abatement application for Jimmy Sassman, eight thirteen Sixth Avenue Southwest. D is a motion to approve the purchase of remanufactured landfill compactor from Tri-County Equipment and Repair, Pearson, Michigan, for five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. This is a CIP item. E is a motion to approve the wastewater treatment plant roof storm damage replacement H&amp;S Roofing Company, Spencer, Iowa, for twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. And F is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for two, twenty-two Spencer Grand Avenue traffic signal equipment upgrades. Hearing date, August fifteen, twenty twenty-two, bid date, August sixteen, twenty twenty-two. I'll make a motion. Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just so the public is aware, what's the net cost going to be for the wastewater treatment roof damage after insurance?
I believe our deductible's a thousand dollars on buildings and that, so.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay, item four, we have some public hearings tonight. A, the first is a public hearing on plans and specs, form of contract for the twenty-twenty-two, Twenty-Fifth Street and Eleventh Avenue Southwest sewer extension project. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Oral comments against? Written comments in favor of?
There are none.
Oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item one is a resolution finally approving and confirming plans, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost for twenty-twenty-two Twenty-Fifth Street and Eleventh Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
Motion made by Ron. Second by Brian. Any discussion? Please vote my machi- please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Two is a motion to approve a utility easement and temporary construction easement from Eckhart Land Company for twenty-twenty-two Twenty-Fifth Street and Eleventh Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension. Motion made by Bill. Second by Lauren. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Three, review bids received for twenty-twenty-two Twenty-Fifth Street and Eleventh Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project. And Ross, I think you are at the mic. I don't think we need a mo- we don't need a motion to review the bids. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We did receive bids last Thursday for this project. We had six bids, all within sixty-one thousand dollars of each other, so we got a pretty good feel for what the market is. The little bid was from Valley Contracting at four hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and zero cents. That was ninety-eight percent of the engineer's estimate, which was four hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and six dollars. And we would recommend award to Valley Contracting in that bid amount. I did talk to Eric Anderson again today. They do have another project with Spencer Municipal Utilities, and I think they're looking to start that project in two to three weeks, the way it sounds. So they'll be in Spencer, and it sounds like, once that project's done, they will start the sewer project, if they can get the materials. That's, that'll be the trick, so. Last we heard, concrete manholes were six to eight weeks out, once they're ordered, shop drawings are approved. So we probably are looking at around October would be the earliest they would get started, first part of October. So we will try and communicate a updated construction schedule when we get it, as we get it, and relay that to everyone, so.
Any questions for Ross?
One quick one. Do we have to wait till the crop's out or anything like that?
We don't have to. There is a, there is crop damage, there's a crop damage number in the easements, and so we can, they can move forward whenever they're ready, so.
So is the plan to, for our sake, to go forward or wait till, because if we're waiting till October, a few more weeks, those crops are probably going to be out.
I would say we'll try, probably try and work with the farmer, you know.
Okay.
You know, if it saves several thousand dollars just to wait a week or two, you know, that's probably in everybody's best interest, so.
So somebody's going to be tracking that?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Hey, Ross, just one other comment. Because we've got time here, is there anything, I mean, I'm sure you've been communicating with the landowners that are needing this. Is there anything that they can do to prep, to help, so once the action starts, that they can be?
Yeah, I think, you know, as far, as far as their portion, you know, their part is their private service, you know, so they can be communicating with the city about permits and everything else, you know, or finding a contractor to do that work. I know there are several contractors in town that do that work, so. And like I said, the city probably has a list, you know, city staff has probably a good list of who's doing work in town, service-wise, so. I would, I would add that, you know, we did check the numbers a little bit, you know, compared the preliminary assessments, and it does appear, based on the bids, the city's costs might go up just a little bit with the oversize and depth, based on how the bids came out, and then all the private property owners should see a little reduction in their final assessments. Of course, we won't know exactly what that number is until the project's over, but that's, that's the feel right now, so.
Ross, is there any allowances built into this bid to cover any change orders?
There's, there's a, there's a little bit of allowance built into the preliminary assessment schedule. We don't necessarily build in any extras in the, in the bids, because they are what they are. It's a unit price contract. So, you know, if there is an extra, hopefully we have a unit bid item to cover it, but if there's not, that'll just be added cost, so. We feel like we've got a pretty good handle on what, what the challenges are. One of them would be field tile, you know, if we run along a string of field tile all the way along the project, you know, that's, that'll be extra cost. I've got quite a bit of footage in the bid, but you just never know, so.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah.
One more quick one is the, will the, the house owners and stuff be able to be in contact with Valley to, if they're there, to bring it right to their house, if so, if they so choose at that time?
I would say maybe it's best if they maybe get in contact with me, or, or I can get, maybe it'd be best if Valley's contact information went out to them through the email chain that's going. That way, if, if they want to call Valley's office, they can see if they can get something set up.
It might save them cost if they're there, if they just gotta do another branch line the other direction, so.
Possibly, you know, they may be interested in that. I haven't asked Eric about that. Sometimes bigger contractors would rather skip some of the service work, but I know Valley does some service work, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Ross. Appreciate it. Okay, so now we can take two courses of action. We can either table action on the bids, or I would entertain a resolution awarding the contract to Valley Contracting for the twenty-twenty-two Twenty-Fifth Street and Eleventh Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension Project.
I will make a recommendation that we accept the bid from Valley and move this thing forward.
Okay, motion made by Ron.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay, thank you. Second public hearing is on a proposal to enter into an amended sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement, and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed three million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. And before we go to the public hearing, I've asked Finance Director Brian Weave to talk a little bit about this big number.
Yeah, so what this action is, is all we're doing is amending the current loan agreement that we have from the Iowa Finance Authority. We've already issued the bulk of it right at two point nine million, which was for the wastewater treatment plant renovations. As you're aware, we enter, or we were able to do what is called a sponsored project, where we can increase our principal, lower our interest. In the end, we still pay the same dollar amount back, but we can use the increased principal for stormwater improvement projects. The project that's been identified is the one up by the North Mall and QRS that the council approved here a month ago or so. So what we do is we just borrow, we get up to, I believe it's ten percent of, ten percent of our original principal that we can add on to the loan. Again, like they said, this amendment will also lower the interest rate that we had paid back, so in the end, the city isn't paying any money back, or any more than we would've had we not amended the loan. So it's just we get to use it and pay less interest back on the funds borrowed.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
There are none.
Oral comments against? Written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item B one is a resolution authorizing and approving an amended loan and disbursement agreement, and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of three million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, taxable sewer revenue improvement and refunding bonds, series twenty-twenty-two. Motion made by Lauren. Second by Bill. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay. Item four C, our third public hearing, is on a development agreement with William J. Mueller Revocable Trust, including annual appropriation tax increment payments. And again, I've asked Brian to, just to explain a little bit about this agreement.
So before you, is the development agreement with the William Mueller Trust. It's for the redevelopment of the old Staples Building for TJ Maxx. What the agreement alludes to is that, over a ten-year period, the city will rebate up to two million dollars, payable either from the property tax increases, which is what we have done the last couple of meetings, when we took that parcel out of the urban renewal area, put it back, or the other source of revenue would be the local option sales tax TIF. That property, along with the Menards subdivision, is in there, so every year, we certify what businesses are there, and if we see increased sales tax within that district, then we can capture it and use it for development purposes or attracting basically retail-type businesses. So I anticipate the majority of it will be paid back through the local option sales tax TIF and at the property side, just due to our past experience with redevelopments of existing buildings. They just typically haven't generated the increase in increment from there, so I would suspect that we would, you know, fulfill this with the increased sales tax that is expected to be generated. And I believe on a side note, Bill was in today and mentioned potentially some movement starting this week, I think is what I heard, on renovations to that building, so.
Sounds good. Okay. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item C one is a resolution approving the development agreement with William J. Mueller Revocable Trust, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments, and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Motion made by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay. Item four D, the last public hearing we have, is a public hearing on proposed text amendment to Title Six of the Spencer City Code by adopting a new Title Six, Chapter Four, Section eleven, entitled Urban Chickens, as recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission. And I've asked Planning Director Alec Schultz to come forward and just talk about the process that planning and zoning went through to get this amendment to the council tonight, so.
Yeah. So, a couple months back, Planning and Zoning heard a request to just rediscuss the urban chickens in the city of Spencer. Planning and Zoning directed staff to draft an ordinance that we would be comfortable with, and one that other communities may have also done a part of. We brought that back to Planning and Zoning. Couple months down the road, we made, we continued to make changes throughout the process. Planning and Zoning did hold a public hearing on the draft that you have before you to see what they could get as far as public input on it. They held that, and they moved forward with the recommending the current draft to, to the city council.
Okay. Thank you very much, Alec. Appreciate it. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have two, Mayor. We have Steve and Lori Taylor submitted a written comment against, as well as Nate Quinn.
Okay. Any oral comments against? No. No. Any written comments in favor of?
We have three, Mayor. One from Crystal Jensen, Jason and Vanessa Moore, and Jake and Liz Kluber.
Okay. Any oral comments in favor of? And if you would just state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Donna Gabel, and my address is one oh five Nineteenth Street Southeast, here in Spencer. And I'm here this evening just simply to request and/or beg your support for backyard chickens. It was August of twenty fourteen that I initially approached the city commissioners, the city leaders, requesting an ordinance for backyard chickens. I am very grateful to have this brought back to the table, and would like to credit the Planning and Zoning Commission for writing and passing a very thorough and a very comprehensive ordinance. There are many benefits to having backyard chickens, but this evening, I'd like to just address two, two major benefits that I think are really important. Number one, the inclusion of city 4-H members, and a strong work ethic. As a former 4-H leader of many years, city children never had the opportunity to enroll in poultry projects, unless they could find a place outside of the city to raise their poultry. Recently, I contacted the Clay County Extension Office, and they indicated to me that there are approximately a hundred and fifty poultry projects, or a hundred and fifty 4-H members that are currently enrolled in poultry. And they are very hopeful for continued growth and the inclusion of 4-H city kids. Secondly, I'd like to address the lifelong skill of teaching a strong work ethic to our children. As a parent of four children and a retired teacher, I think it just makes sense to teach children responsibility. And this can be installed through daily chores, watering, feeding chickens, gathering eggs, and even cleaning the coop. Being responsible and gaining a strong work ethic becomes second nature and carries them well throughout life. In conclusion, let's allow our 4-H members to be given the opportunity to include raising poultry. Also, let's encourage responsibility and build strong work ethics for tomorrow's leaders, which is our youth. If you have any questions, I would try to answer them, if I could.
Any questions for Donna? Okay. Thanks, Donna. Appreciate it.
Thank you in advance for hopefully saying yes to backyard chickens.
Okay. Item one is an ordinance amending Title Six of the Spencer City Code by adopting a new Title Six, Chapter Four, Section eleven, entitled Urban Chickens. This is the first filing.
Mayor? We haven't closed the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I declare the public hearing now closed. What?
Or if there's any other comments.
Are there any other comments? Thank you. Oh. Okay.
Actually, I forgot my notes at home, so I'm just gonna wing it. But my name's Nicole Harrington, and I too have been here previously in support of backyard chickens, and a lot of the points that I have made previously is that we are a Blue Zones community, and I think that that ties in very well to the support of backyard chickens, as well as sustainability, and just would provide us in the community with good, healthy options, as well as more self-sustain- sustainability. So I think our community, especially being rural, known for the Clay County Fair, we should, you know, kind of get up to, current times, we're seeing a lot of backyard chicken ordinances already approved and passed in more urban areas such as Des Moines, and pretty much all of the major cities surrounding us have already adopted an ordinance to allow backyard chickens up to, you know, a reasonable amount, and then, so I just would like to reiterate that I think this community definitely needs that as well. And I guess the, one of the main concerns that I have heard from people on the opposing side is just what happens if it gets to be a nuisance, or what happens if you're living next to someone that maybe isn't, isn't as responsible with this. And I think the point that I want to make is that if we just open it up to the public and allow it, if there are any issues, they can be, could be addressed individually, just as we treat any other pet nuisance or problem on an individual basis. But I just feel like, in the past, it's been very unfair. The current ordinance has allowed several, I mean, pretty much has allowed even up to alligators, up to twelve and eighteen inches long, several other ridiculous pets. And whereas chickens being very reasonable, I feel like this should be not excluded in our city ordinance. So with that, I just ask and hope for your support on this as well. And I too have a lot of other written information I'd be happy to supply to anyone else who maybe has some specific questions about pros for doing this. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, and Nicole, I wasn't trying to not let you speak. I was just getting ahead of myself a little bit, as I sometimes do, so.
No problem. I'm sorry, I'm so nervous, and I'm trying, I was just trying to, like I said, just jump in and do this without my notes, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay. Now I declare the public hearing now closed. So now we can go to item one, which is an ordinance amending Title Six of the Spencer City Code by adopting a new Title Six, Chapter Four, Section eleven, entitled Urban Chickens, and this is the first filing.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
Motion made by Ron.
A second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? Now, Donovan, if you wanted to comment, you certainly can.
Yeah, I guess one of the comments that I have, that, you know, I sat on the last Planning and Zoning just to kind of see the feel of it, and I know Planning and Zoning and everybody went through a ton of work on this, but one of the things that I hope was considered is Northwest Iowa and this area, we are the world's largest egg-producing place. From Sioux Center to Estreville to Rembrandt to Sunrise Farms, that's in Harris, that isn't too far. We have the largest egg-producing and chicken facilities around here. And my concern with that is, when you call a service organization in, such as heating and air conditioning, electrician, all these places, they gotta wait seventy-two hours, extra cleaning of their vehicles and stuff, before they can go perform maintenance at these other places. And that's, doesn't matter if you go from Sunrise Farms to Rembrandt to anywhere else, because of the bird flu. And it's, it's a big biosecurity reasons. And I'm worried a little bit about that, just with going from, you know, most, I'm just gonna put it out there, and granted, I'm probably a little biased, but if you have a condenser unit in your backyard next to your chicken coop, and we're out there, technically, within seventy-two hours, you cannot go to another place that would have any kind of chickens or technically any birds in that. So it is a biosecurity reason. We have to, in our company, we have to go through a lot of biosecurity training and do different things. We gotta fill it out whenever you go into these factories. And they are a big Northwest Iowa economic boom for all of us, and we all have, can relate, you know, with Isanova, with different things, that all is egg-producing. So that, that's just one of my concerns. So that, that's just one of my concerns is, you know, service can be a little bit different. And you gotta, and they just have to be aware of that. It's, I guess, one of my concerns.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes, Bill.
I would like, Don, who's drafted this, tell us what's different about this as compared to the one that we did not approve some time ago.
I'm not sure I can do that. I can tell you what's here briefly. I think it's fair to characterize this as a quite restrictive ordinance. People that wish to have backyard chickens are limited to four hens. They're, that provide space of four square feet per hen. Strict rules on odor, noise, prevention of attracting predators or parasites, strict requirements on the waste removal. So I think it's probably more restrictive than ordinances that have been considered in the past and more thorough. I can say that it was based to a significant extent on an ordinance that's been adopted and is operating in the city of Cedar Rapids.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Bill?
It does. I, I have a family member who raises chickens in a community in the state of Washington. And the problem or the challenge they have is rodent control. To the point where they ended up having to, basically, their chickens are inside all the time because they cannot go out. And that was the only way that they were able to control the rodents. And I've got a concern about that because it's, if you got one rodent, you've probably got a whole lot more someplace else. And that's my, that's probably my number one concern. The other, it's not necessarily a concern, is that Alec and his new person after him are going to have to monitor this and take care of nuisance complaints and those sort of things. And I think right now, we don't have any idea what that might be. I'm not opposed to that. For that reason, I'll tell you upfront right now, I'm gonna vote no because I don't see a real big change between now and why I voted no before. And I apologize for those to the people who want to raise, have chickens. But this is only the first reading. And I'm, if I get bombarded with emails, I get bombarded with emails. That's fine. That's my job. I'm sitting up here. So those are my, those are my concerns. And if I can become comfortable with those two, several things that I'm now uncomfortable with, then I want to change my mind and vote yes when we're done. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Anyone else?
Don, one question.
Ron?
Yeah. On the nuisance, you know, that seems to be always a problem. So what would be the process of somebody nuisance and how long would it take? You know, that always seems to be the problem of remedying a problem. Seems like it takes way too long to remedy the problem. So, you know, I would like to see up in advance what, what that process would be. Do we give them seven days? Do we give them 14 days? Because, because if there is a problem, usually it's, it's a problem. And if we have to give them a month or longer, I'd like to see it, you know, where it's regulated at seven days or something. So could you kind of go about the process of remedying nuisances?
First, and Alec can certainly add, but I believe our building department is very prompt in these sorts of things. If they get a complaint about a nuisance, I think they're looking at it by the next day typically.
Right.
Unless there's some special circumstances. And, and they try to work with the owner, and that might resolve it. If it doesn't resolve it, they typically report that to me. And we issue the nuisance notice. And that is typically, as you've mentioned, seven to 14 days to comply. Doesn't need to be longer than that. And then the ordinance does allow the city to actually go in and take action to abate the nuisance. We're reluctant to do that in many cases. I think maybe there'd be less reluctance here because it would be a pretty minor sort of thing. We're not talking about a major operation. So I think a nuisance complaint can be effectively addressed in two to three weeks.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does. And to Bill's response, and I'll make it short here. My daughter does in West Des Moines, I mean, I had to build a chicken coop down there for her because, I have to be honest, I mean, and, and I voted against it in 2014. I, I would probably vote in favor of it on the first reading so I can get more input from, because if we, if we vote it down, we won't let, we're actually not letting anybody bring forward. And I'd like to hear from citizens what they think on it. You know, I, I'm not a strong, in favor, I'm not a strong against, but I would like to hear what people have to say. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I've never been so on the fence about anything since I've been elected because I really just don't know. I think I would probably follow.
I just said, no pun intended, on the fence.
Good one. I probably would follow along with voting yes. But I do have a lot of questions. And I would actually welcome input from people on both sides of this to email me with their thoughts so that I can ask questions. I assume that the waste is going to be, are people gonna throw this in their garbage cans? And it goes to the landfill? Is that a problem with landfill? I would assume not. Okay. So how much waste does, can four chickens make?
I have a coop at home with four chickens right now with not very much waste.
Okay. Well.
Councilman Nelson, maybe I can assist if that's okay.
Okay, Brian?
Knock yourself out.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Interesting points, all good points. You know, biosecurity's certainly at the forefront, especially given the recent area in flu that we observed. One of the interesting things about that is they actually link it to migrating birds more than they did anything else, which makes one wonder if we need to look at an ordinance against bird feeders, seeing how they might draw more of that into this area than for hens. I can certainly appreciate concerns about waste. Talking with Mark White, yes, that's exactly what would happen. He sees absolutely no issue with it going out to the transfer station. It's very similar to what he believes most dog owners and cat owners currently do with their kitty litter or their dog waste. Rodents and pests, certainly a concern and one I wouldn't discount. I probably would remind us all a couple of things. One, again, bird feeders, I see more squirrels at a bird feeder than I do anything else. Same thing with ground squirrels and mice. They tend to congregate around those, I think, more than anything else. I also can recall a time when I was on the police department and being out at night. And I think anytime that you move into an urban area and encroach on other animals' territory, we're just going to be living with them no matter what. Drive down any city street today and you'll probably see unfortunate remnants of a animal that's been struck. You know, I think there's just a lot of things to take into consideration. But one of the biggest things that I looked at when this came before us was our current ordinance, which allows for parakeets, pigeons, pheasants, quail, or other similar birds to be kept. It also allows birds of prey, of which there are 446 known species. What's interesting about that, more specifically, is the fact that we allow up to 30 of them by ordinance with no real clear language on exactly what you should or should not be doing with them. Certainly no permit. And if you read this new ordinance with relation to urban chicken, no auxiliary building permit. So I think the, as our attorney has, has clearly stated, the number of steps that an individual is going to have to take if they wish to have four hens in their yard is pretty substantial. And I don't believe anyone who's willing to go through that process does so with the intention of not being a responsible owner of those animals. I can recall more nuisance violations in reference to dogs and cats than I can of anything else, to the point where I believe we've condemned multiple houses in the last 15 years in our community because of it. You know, I thought Citizen made an interesting point about communities and going on with the times. A quick Google search, spent about 25 minutes, got deep into Google. If you've never been on page 15 of Google, and I hadn't until just the other day, but I found over 117 cities in the state of Iowa that currently allow for urban chickens. We're actually one of the few. Couple other points that I've had get brought up to me that I thought were fair and interesting that I wanted to touch on where that chickens were loud. And I believe that could be one of the nuisance that Ron was touching on. The average hen produces 60 to 70 decibels. That's very similar to what you're hearing from me if I wasn't on microphone. The average dog produces 110 when they bark. Another interesting point that I thought was, I believe Donna ran into this previously when, when she had brought this before in 2014. Someone had indicated a concern about property values. Forbes actually just released the top 10 cities where values are increasing, and all 10 of those cities allow for urban chickens in their community. When I ran here just six months ago, this was a topic that was brought before me by a handful of individuals, and they voiced their approval of it tonight. And I sit before you tonight trying to be their voice. I think it's one of those situations where you don't know until you know. And, you know, if we give it a shot and it's not going well, and it's becoming an issue, and it's becoming a burden on city staff, then we readdress it like anything else. But to allow for the level of animals that we allow and to not allow for individuals who wish to keep four chickens in their property, it doesn't seem reasonable. And I believe that this is a reasonable body, and I hope that we can maintain that reasonableness tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Brian? Any other comments? Okay. Then please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, nay. Larson, aye. Wenchell, nay. Hanson, aye. Reed, nay. Bulk, aye.
Okay. Carries on to the first filing. Okay. Item five under old business is an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter Eight by adopting provisions regulating the operation of electric stand-up scooters. This is the final filing. Dan, do you have any updates on the, on bird scooters?
I do. Keep in mind that we approved the contract previously. This is just an ordinance for dealing with how we handle it under our, under our code. But I did get in contact with the representative and based upon some of the input I got with email about testing out the, the geofencing, they'd be happy to do that. They're not gonna be able to do that until shortly before they deploy here because they don't have scooters available just yet, which is one of the reasons they're delaying it till spring. And they would have to have their local fleet manager hired to do that demonstration. So sometime in the spring before they deploy, we'll have, we'll have them demo that geofence for Grand Avenue, and so we can see how that works.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Donovan.
I'll second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Or questions for Dan? Okay. Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wenchell, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay. Item five B is an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the July 2022 edition of Spencer Consolidated Urban Renewal Areas pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. This is the second filing. Motion made by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wenchell, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay. B1 is to waive the final filing and proceed to final consideration.
Still moved.
Motion made by Donovan.
Second it.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wenchell, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay. B2 is an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the July 2022 edition of the Spencer Consolidated Urban Renewal Areas pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. This is the final filing. Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wenchell, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Okay. Under new business, item six A is a motion to approve the amended planning director job description as recommended by the Personnel Committee. Motion made by Lauren. Second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. B is a motion to approve the agreement with Robert Mahan for removal of 24-by-20 building at 2979 River Road, Gretnge, Iowa, the landfill for $3,000. Motion made by Tom. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Six C is a motion to approve the agreement with Heartland Contracting LLC for removal of garage structure at 2979 River Road, Gretnge, Iowa, landfill for $1,000. Motion made by Tracy. Second by Bill. Any discussion?
Just real quick, I would like to thank the city for everyone jumping in a van and going out to Gretnge and looking at this stuff. So there's quite a few people up here that gotta see what they're doing. So just thanks for putting that together and letting us go out and take, take a look, so.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D is a resolution accepting work covering the 2021 Spencer Substandard Housing Rehab Program Project Number 11. Motion made by Bill.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. Any discussion?
Just a thank you again for these projects. It's wonderful. I mean, Alex, where, where are we? Is this the last project on this rehab? Or Brian, maybe you know where, where we're at.
No, I think in my cover notes, we've probably expended about half of what we have set aside. Last I knew with Northwest Iowa Planning, at least last spring, they had three other, three or four other applications I think they were looking at, but they were holding off due to supply chain issues and getting bids. So we will check with Northwest Iowa Planning, who administers this for us. But I believe there's some others that are in the wings waiting for supplies and building materials to kind of become more prevalent again, and the cost. to kind of become more prevalent again, and the costs to come down, because I know last time, this is the second time we bid this property just because of costs the first time around, so. But yeah, I believe we're about halfway through what we had allocated.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Anyone else? Please vote by machine.
Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wanchell, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Bulk, aye.
Item six E is a motion to approve electronic waste service agreement with the City of Spencer and the retrofit companies, Inc., for a term of one year, beginning August 1, 2022, and ending on July 31, 2023, with options to renew annually. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Six F is a motion to approve a 28E agreement between the City of Spencer, Clay County, and the Iowa State Patrol for use and maintenance of Clay County's new gun range.
Still move.
Motion made by Lauren.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item six G is a motion to approve fire department AC repairs with Christian sheet metal Spencer, Iowa for $9,573. Motion made by Lauren.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item seven, department head reports. Planning Department, Alec.
Good evening again, everyone. So in the planning department, business as usual, plenty of buildings getting worked on. As far as building department, we did send out the, the monthly report out here this, today. So all good things there, keeping us on our toes. With the nuisance abatement, we're working on, right now, the tree, the first tree notice has gone out. So we'll be following up with those as well over the next month or so. Other work that we've been working on, obviously, you've seen the ordinance work with things that have come from planning and zoning, and the other various board of adjustment variances and special exception use grants that have happened over the past month. Other than that, it's been staying on top of building projects in town and looking forward at future development projects to keep those things moving forward. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Any questions for Alec? Thank you, Alec. Library, Sarah Beth.
Good evening. All right. So we've had balancing professionals here at the library finishing up their balancing work, and then once that's done, they can retrocommission the controls with Woodman's, and that HVAC project is done, tentatively, just in time for the, the roof replacement project to get underway. So we had to have some electricians in, Pixlers was in, working on the exhaust fans as part of the HVAC project. And then we had some issues with lights, too, so they came back for that, and he's just generally teaching me what I need to know to keep those maintained, so that's nice. Our minor rearranging that we did on July 22nd is going well. We're getting some positive feedback. The greatest accomplishments were like having all of the adult fiction section in one place together, and all of our audiovisual materials, video games, DVDs, all of that's in one section. And we also kind of created a couple more cozy spots to read and/or study, so that has been a success. Summer reading is wrapping up. We've got axe throwing for the teens tomorrow at 2:00, and then our final, final summer reading party is this Saturday, Saturday, August 6th at 2:00. And Chad Elliott will be there for a concert and to reveal the mural he has painted for the library. And other than that, final prizes for summer reading will be drawn for by the end of the week.
Sounds good. Any questions? Thank you much.
Thanks.
Fire Chief Conian.
Did you say axe throwing? I want to call it axe throwing. That makes fine.
A guy who's experienced with axes.
It's not bad. You can't use the pick at it, sorry. Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Councilman Manager. Your Spencer Fire Department answered 67 calls for service in the month of July. They include 34 for EMS. Some of our EMS calls included possible stroke victims, seizures, lift assists, broken legs, and a lot of difficulty breathing. Fire calls for the month included, we had a major gas meter malfunction over this past weekend, and the crews all did fantastic, as they always do. Fluid cleanups, as well as a few car crashes, a couple of CO detectors going off. Another interesting call is a gentleman carrying five 100, 200-pound LP cylinders in the back of a pickup truck, one of them leaking, 4:00 on a Friday afternoon. Makes you want to think for a second, right? So anyway, so the guys did a great job on that as well. And we did have one garbage can fire due to fireworks, and it was, believe it or not, the people were cleaning up the fireworks, and they did a good job, and they understood what happened. So all in all, it was a good, safe season. Our ambulance ran, our in-house ambulance ran five calls, including allergic reactions, fall victims, as well as strokes. Our special duties for the month included a water fight with the library that recently happened, which is always a great time. The smiles are spread both ways, with we as the adult doing it, as well as the children that are having a great time. Clay County races, as well as fireworks standby. Lastly, our training was Stop the Bleed for our EMS side, working with our new unit of 992 and 994 to have Sempatico water shuttling operations. Lastly, we attended a hyperbaric chamber training at the hospital. The hospital recently has added two hyperbaric chambers to their third floor. And what would you do if, you know, something happened? So it was a great orientation for us. Lastly, I'd like to speak to the public that's here, ministers and that. It's going to be hot this week. It's time to check on our neighbors once in a while. If you know of a senior citizen, if you know of somebody that might not have, you know, all the air conditioning, invite them into your house for a couple of hours, and let's, let's do what Spencer does best, treat everybody like family, and give them a cool spot to cool off at. Other than that, I wish you a good day.
Thanks, Chief. Police, Chief Warburton.
The Spencer Police Department responded to 1,065 calls for service in the month of July, and we performed 32 arrests. Over the summer months here, it appears that our school resource officer's been busy. We've done, attended the Iowa Dare Conference here last week. We also had the Iowa School Resource Officer Conference in Des Moines for three days, as well as we have a basic SRO school in Sioux Center coming up next week. Everybody's trying to cram in all these, all these trainings in before school starts. So we'll be sending two officers, Officer Kearney and Officer Hanson, to that school as well. That school doesn't come around that close very often, and so being that we're right here in Sioux Center, we're going to go ahead and take advantage of that. Last week, July 20th, the high-risk entry and arrest team was in Spencer doing training, thanks to John Conian for allowing them to use the fire department training tower for part of their searching techniques, as well as Oniota Park. Lastly, August 15th coming up, I'm advising the general public that at 5:00 PM, members of the Clay County Sheriff's Office, Spencer Fire, Clay County Conservation, Spencer Hospital, and the police department will be forming a school safety scenario training at the high school. This will last until approximately 6:30 PM. Residents will be notified in the, in the area for the increased presence, to be notified of the increased presence here with all of the emergency units in that area. Roads near the high school will be closed temporarily during those training scenarios, just to keep security a priority for us. So I'm encouraging the general public to make sure that they're planning accordingly, getting into and from their homes at that time. You have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, I got a personal question and a public comment. If we have drugs that we need to dispose of, other than the normal drug drop day, whenever that happens to be, what are, what are options for citizens?
Yep. You can come to the Spencer Police Department or the Clay County Sheriff's Office, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. You can go ahead and drop those off at any time. We'll take, all we'll do is we'll take the, we'll ask you to take your prescriptions out of the bottles and put them in a Ziploc bag, and then we'll go ahead and take those in our drug drop box. You bet.
Chief, before you go, I just, I think you know this, I've been a longtime proponent of the SRO program, as a teacher, as a councilman, and, and as mayor. But for the general public, could you just touch on what the SRO officer does for not only the schools, but also for the community at large?
Sure. So Darren has become the, the face of the police department in that school system. He's breaking down a lot of walls in that school as far as encouraging kids and communications back and forth, and he's also there to do a job, right? He's to keep our kids and our school safe, and to make sure he points out to school staff if he sees an unsafe environment. But just to have the, the face there of the police department, have somebody that's consistently with those kids, somebody that they can trust, has been huge for the department. He's done wonders for us. And in fact, we had a Cherokee PD came up and, and rode along with Darren just to see how good they could be in their schools. So used him as a, as a catalyst for them.
Yeah. I think it's a great program and a great venture with the school and the city to have this program, and, and I hope we keep it going for a long, long time.
Me, too. Me, too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chief, one more thing. I'm not going to let you go that easy. Can we make sure that when we're doing the, the school and closing down streets and stuff, that somebody can get it on our Facebook page, just to let citizens know that what's going on before rumors, rumors start happening? Because I know we got a pretty good following on our Facebook page.
Yeah, there's also going to be some communications that'll go out from the school themselves, because obviously, we've got practices, volleyball, football, stuff like that, that's going to be going on, that they're actually going to suspend those practices during that time to make sure that we have access to the entire building, so that we can be as, do as complete a job as we can. And we're also going to go door-to-door dropping off flyers in all those areas, so that the residents don't look out and see all the increased presence and think that they may want to come help or assist us. That's not what we want to have happen. So we want to make sure security is, if security is, is maintained that entire time, so.
It's a training session.
It is absolutely a training session.
All right.
All right.
Okay. Anybody else before he goes? Yeah. Okay. Public Works, Mark Craig.
How are we doing tonight? Evening, Mayor, Council. Street guys have been pretty busy doing intake repairs and doing some ADA sidewalk approach upgrades. They've been continuing doing their sewer cleaning program on the northwest quadrant of town. We sprayed for mosquitoes twice so far this summer. Spraying's been limited because of the dry weather, which I'm okay with. They've been prepping for the Seal Coat projects that will be starting next week, I believe, ish. So hopefully that, they're all ready for that Seal Coat project to go. Completed the painting of the sidewalks and crosswalks and turning lanes in town, so the painting is completed. Solid Waste has been continuing their day-to-day operations and are in the process of rebuilding one of our garbage trucks, because, for a backup, so. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions?
Appreciate the painting. Doing the walk on the trails and that sort of thing, you see what, what your men have been doing, they've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Parks and Rec, Jared.
Good evening, everyone. So on the West Leach Boat Ramp Project, they get one of the sections put in, pushed into the river today, and they're pouring the next pad, and they'll hopefully pour that apron here soon, and then finish the parking lot, put some parking barriers and stuff up around the parking lot, and hopefully finish that project up soon. Also doing some tree removal in West Leach Park, so that's, if you remember, that's where the Emerald Ashbore was found, and most of those trees are infected with it, so we have started to, to remove those down there, so you'll see that work going on there now. The Rocket Slide, got a, an email from the surfacing company, they'll be here August 18th to do that surfacing, so be on the lookout for that. The guys are getting ready to put some of the other pieces back together, and the cone and stuff on, they're gathering some hardware for that. Pedersen Park Backstop Midwest Fence and Gate will also be here in the next five to 10 days to replace the backstop on Field 2, and get that project completed. Currently working on the PD parking lot at Green Space there, doing some landscaping project for that. And then I'll have a more detailed report here tomorrow on some of the other smaller projects and things that we have going on, so. And then finally, I'd like, just like to thank everyone, staff, my staff, as well as the other departments, the Council and Mayor, and other businesses and organizations and individuals I've worked with here for my time over the last three years, the YMCA, partnering with them. I've enjoyed my time here, we're, we're looking forward to, to moving to Kansas City here soon, so. But I just wanted to take the time to thank everybody here, and Spencer's been great to us and our family, and we've, we've really enjoyed it, so, thanks.
Okay. Any questions for Jared?
I just want to say, as, as, as the Chair of Parks and Recs, it's, it's been really good working with you. I'm, I'm sad to see you go, but I'm happy for you and your family, and.
Appreciate that.
Big shoes to fill, but we'll do what we can.
Sounds good. Thanks, Tom.
Hey, Jared, I did have a, a citizen on the Rocket Slide, the light is very bright, I guess. I haven't been out there as late as, but they said it's very bright out there. I don't know how bright it is, but I saw a picture, and it looked pretty bright.
Yeah, I haven't seen it at night just yet, but I've heard that, too, and so we, we may have to, you know, maybe change the angle of it or something, but we'll have to work with SMU on that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Golf course, Brian is not here tonight, but he sent his usual Sunday report, which was very thorough indeed. City Attorney's Report, Don.
Thank you, Mayor. First, you'll find before you this evening a copy of the Iowa League's outline of what they consider relevant legislation adopted during the last session. This was from the July League Magazine, so if you, you've received that magazine, you've already seen this, and may have reviewed it, but I wanted to put it before you. Unfortunately, my highlighting didn't copy well, so you're going to have to work through that. I would say there's nothing that I would consider earth-shattering. Brian, we might point out that the changes in the business property tax credit, allowing the residential rollback to be applied, might be very significant in the long run. Again, this is a situation where they've reduced a real estate tax proceeds available to cities and provided for a backfill, but you know from experience that backfills don't seem to last. I guess the other comment I would make is, again, the legislature, in my judgment, indicates not strong support for the concept of home rule. There's three, for example, here, none of them are major, but where they've decided to eliminate the authority of a city to deal with a local issue. They've eliminated the ability to regulate certain home-based businesses. I don't think that's a problem here, because the home occupations that we permit, I think, were pretty consistent with what the legislature has now said we must permit, but that was one example. Another was, they eliminated the possibility of applying zoning to fireworks retailers, for the most part. And I guess those are the things I'm going to highlight. If you do have time to review this and have some questions, please let me know about that. The second main thing I'd like to talk about, I'm sure you all recall that the city, and particularly, the building department staff have been working in regard to the Mobile Home Park at Eighteenth and Fourth for the last month. The personnel of the building department continue to work with the owners and occupants of the Mobile Home Park to resolve issues. But tomorrow, we will have a hearing before the court on the application that was filed about ten days ago to request an injunction requiring the city and SMU to restore power. SMU wasn't originally a party to that, but needed to be, and they now are. So, we're prepared for that hearing, we'll have it tomorrow, and we'll see what goes from there. As far as activities in the city attorney's office for the last month, about half of it was spent, about twenty hours spent on the Mobile Home Park and the other variety of more routine sorts of things. Any questions?
Questions for Don? Thank you, Don. And Human Resources, Jessica is not here tonight, but she has submitted a written report. Okay, item eight, Engineers Report, Ross.
Good evening again, quick report. As Jared said, down at the West Leach Park Boat Ramp Replacement Project, MLS pushed the push-in slab in today into the river. They also poured the second portion of the ramp today, so all they have left is the approach up at the top. They'll be doing some armoring of the bank, the riverbank, and also finishing the parking lot, like he said, putting in some bollards to, around the lot, to keep cars where they're supposed to be. On the Fourth Street Overlay Project, the pavement joints got sealed last week. Traffic control is scheduled to be picked up on Wednesday, and we're looking for seeding to be completed probably around that third week of August. Out at the airport, the Terminal Rehab Project, both contractors, or two contractors, have been working on the interior and exterior of the building. They're hoping to wrap up the majority of the work on that project this week, so hopefully, they can get that complete. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. City Managers Report, Dan.
I had three things, but I had already mentioned the bird scooters, so I have two left. We have a signed purchase agreement from the property owners up on the property of the North Y, so we will be getting that to you at a future council meeting to approve that purchase and get that project moving along. Also, there's been some odor complaints on the west side of town, and I live on the west side of town, so I know what they're talking about. But staff has been in contact with Sinrise, which used to be Isanova, and they have an engineering firm reviewing their operations with a capital equipment plan to, after the first year, to cover the equalization tank and install biofilters. They're also investigating a different process to ex- treat the exhaust beams of the dryer, so staff feels Sinrise is seriously looking at making improvements to the operation, and it's not going to be quick, but probably by sometime after the first of the year, they will get some of this stuff going. Obviously, they're going to have the same supply chain issues as everybody else, so we'll see how that goes.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, under the Mayor's Report, got a few things. First, I would entertain a motion to approve John Curran to the Planning and Zoning Commission to replace Kara Albert, term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Who got the first? Tracy? Tom, okay. And Donovan got the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pos nay, motion carries. Secondly, I just want to thank Jared Albert and Alec Schultz for their service to the city of Spencer, Jared for the last three years, I believe, and Alec for about a year and a half. And they are excellent directors, and they are great public servants, and they will certainly be missed around here. So, thank you again, guys, for your service, really appreciate it. Then, I'd also like to make mention, and I don't always mean to bring up historical topics, but but this week, this week is a pretty important week in, for things that have been done to make America a better place for all of us. And it really shows, all three of these things show America's greatness, and it shows that as a people, we can come together, solve problems, and move our country forward. And I'll be brief, I promise I'll be brief on these. In nineteen fifty-eight, President Eisenhower signed into law NASA, the founding of NASA. Within eleven years, Neil Armstrong was walking on the moon. I mean, just think about that, that's amazing. In nineteen sixty-five, President Johnson went to Independence, Missouri, hometown of President Harry Truman. President Johnson signed into law the Medicare Act, which has helped seniors for the last, I don't know, fifty-some years, and really moved America forward. And just as a side note, President Truman, who was about eighty-three at the time, was in attendance at the signing ceremony and became the first American to sign up for Medicare. And then, lastly, in nineteen ninety, President H.W. Bush signed into law the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. And that was spearheaded by Iowa's own Tom Harkin. And it was a bipartisan effort, all of these were bipartisan efforts. And President Bush and Senator Harkin and many other senators and representatives enacted that piece of legislation. And it has made profound impact on Americans with disabilities for the last thirty-plus years. And things that we now take for granted are in place in the United States. So, I think those are three important things, and I do think that they show our greatness, and they show what we can do when we come together to solve problems. So, with that, I will go to Counseling Committee Reports.
We have a regular city council meeting on the fifteenth, normal time, and on our previous tour, it was mentioned that we should take a tour of some of the facilities, so we're going to try to start organizing that. We may have to do, that might be a two-parter, because we have a lot of facilities to look at, so. We'll be reaching out to you to try to schedule that and get a bus lined up and do all of that stuff for another fun time.
And I'm sorry I missed the fun time at landfill, but I'll promise to try and make this one. Okay. Item twelve is a motion to approve bills and claims. Motion made by Bill. Okay.
As I was going through those, and it really isn't about claims themselves, I happened to notice the amount that we paid for fuel costs on that, on this one. And my question to Brian is, how did that play out for the year end, the year just ending with increased fuel costs? And then, looking forward to the fiscal year that we're sitting in now, when we did the budget, we did that back in, probably looking at the numbers with December, January, and we've seen a significant change in fuel prices. Is that something we're going to have to look at to amend the budget for? That's the question.
I don't have either answer for you right now, Bill. I will send out something tomorrow where we ended last year on the fuel. I believe we have seen fuel costs a little bit cheaper the last couple fills we've had, so we'll continue. We did increase it some amount, just because we knew gas or fuel was going up, but I'll get something out tomorrow. Yeah, no, we looked at it, I don't know, I know we kind of amended towards the end last year, but we'll get something out to you, guys.
And that motion also includes Mr. Mayor, the list that he sent.
Thank you, Bill. Second by Brian, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pos nay, motion carries. Item thirteen, other business opportunity to address the council. Saying no one. Item fourteen, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Donovan, Tracy? Bill? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pos nay? Meeting adjourned.